All right, welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board meeting for January 19th. And it's 6:05. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, in every way and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to introduce two new members of the planning board, Ryan Gleason and Chelsea Kenyon. Chelsea's an alternate, Ryan's a voting member. And...
Until 2024.
I knew I'd get you to talk.
Didn't take long.
Yeah, I figured we'd get it out of the way. And we appointed Ryan until 2024, that's when that term would run out. And Chelsea's will be, and Chelsea and Adam, we also appointed Adam Brock. He's obviously out getting ready for the snowstorm tonight, but he said he would try to make it. But both Chelsea and Adam will be until this June. And then there'll be reappointments at that point, so. But we do appreciate the three people coming forward to fill this board. We haven't had a full board in a while. I don't, I can't remember the last time I had a full board, so it's pretty exciting news.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Most important part.
All right, has anyone, do you want to be able to look at the minutes probably, except for Gavin?
I haven't, it's 12 pages, I haven't gotten through it.
You want to just table until next meeting?
Yeah, we're all, yeah.
All right, yeah, just do this one.
It's a long one.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
Uh, yes.
Chairman, I move that we table the meeting minutes of January 5th until the next meeting.
All in favor? Five, all opposed? Not done? All right. New business. The John Butler, 20 Chipmunk Run Map 112 Lot 022, application for greatest practical extent. Want to come up to the podium, please?
I'm John Butler, I'm here with my wife Jane. We own the house at Chipmunk Run, and it's, it's needs of refresh. And so that's, that's what we're gonna do. Bob Sullivan is gonna be the contractor on the job. Kind of where we're at right now.
The plan's out of, tear down the existing structure, deck, and the porch on the waterfront side, and rebuild on the existing foundation.
I have a bunch of other photos, just give me a second, I'll pull them all up for you. Bear with me, I gotta, I gotta pull them all up right now.
How far from the lake are we now?
There's a map in there. There's a survey in there, the 39 and a half feet shows the deck. There's also included some prints. The addition, most of the addition is, is a deck, wraparound deck. Thirty percent.
So the picture is the existing?
That's the existing.
Existing, correct. And there is a, a septic design included in the packet for a new septic that includes the Fuji system. So.
Are you gonna tear any of this concrete pad up that's underneath the enclosed porch?
I hope there's not to.
Yeah, I think there's no plans to remove that.
You gonna put in a driveway that doesn't exist now?
Uh, well, yeah, I think it's just gonna remain gravel.
Gravel driveway.
Yeah.
What's different about it, it says proposed driveway here.
It's just, I just started filling the things, that's me. It's the same number as, it was up there, I just kept on carrying numbers down. You can, you can crucify me, not them.
No, so the lot coverage looks good.
Why do I have two different numbers in the non-vegetated lot?
Huh? I don't know, just worried that, just couldn't go that they're under 20%.
Pretty good amount.
Right?
What are we, in these?
Right here, it's on these two.
Oh, I didn't. I didn't fill those out. So you can crucify them.
Did you do the math on them?
Yeah.
Okay.
One probably got the driveway and one didn't, if it was 450. Or 440 in that ballpark.
Yeah, 440, right, I don't know.
A little bit more than that, yeah.
640. So you think it's the driveway?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think it's that bolt launch that's on the edge. Is, might be the difference between the two numbers. You can see it on the app, plot plan.
Cross is over.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Driveway?
Yeah. I think they look within their 30% expansion. The increase is basically that wraparound porch?
Yes, yep.
You leaving your, that same bump out, it's gonna be the same distance off the house as well?
The front porch is.
Yeah.
He says there's a bolt launch?
There's a right away that goes down on the west side of the property.
You see the, in the map, you see the dark? That goes, it just cuts through their property and goes, keeps on going, yeah. Yeah. It's just on, it's on their property, part of a right away.
We're using the existing foundation, so it's not gonna move back at all. The wraparound porch won't go any closer than that 30.
That existing porch, no. I think that's why the corners are clipped.
Yeah, they clipped them so that it wouldn't encroach on the business of the water. About 65, somewhere in there, yeah.
The foundation's still in good shape?
Yeah, it's poor as concrete foundation.
Amazing, amazing the concrete work and so on, for that amount of time and the, just, you know, no cracks, no cracks in that slab in the back. Nothing's new.
Would you define the condition that if you found, during demolition, you found problems with the foundation or foundation damage, can you come back with a report or reconsider anything?
Can't see anything there.
Yeah.
You would have to anyway, Gavin.
Yeah.
You did it with the project on 7th Street just a little while ago. When you approved it for using the existing foundation, then the other one was destroyed. You have to change the conditions.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good.
So I haven't heard of the Fuji system yet.
Takes a picture.
It, it works on tight lots near water.
It's a lot like your, the single air, it's just a different brand. Yeah, so they, it still does the whole circulation and refines it so that when it comes out to the leaching area, it's really broken down. Has to be treated, was it once a year?
Once a year.
I saw the agreement, yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice to see a new system going in. What, do you know where the old system was?
It's a concrete tank with maybe 10 feet of pipe on that. I have no idea if it's a leaking field, but I'm sure it's not very extensive.
I'll make a motion that we approve the greatest application for greatest practical extent for John Butler, 20 Chipmunk Run Map 112 Lot 022. Using the existing foundation and no closer than the, is it 39 and a half feet from the body of water?
All in favor? All opposed? That's it?
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Jason, that was a good package.
Uh huh.
That was a good package.
Dave did a fine job.
It was all Davey.
Well, see, I gave credit right away to him, so.
I told him that the more he gave me, the better it would be. Information overload.
Fortunately, I forgot the agenda.
Huh?
It's just the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you can't be perfect, all kind of. All right. Next was just a roundtable discussion?
Uh, yeah, so we, I meant to bring it upstairs, so I got the budget or the timeline for ordinances. I believe, I think, I need to know how many we're gonna present, how many warrants we're gonna present by February 17th. And I believe it's to the second or third weekend of March that we need to have kind of like a rough draft of these, of these zoning articles or work.
Yeah, so February is just the number?
Yeah, we need to tell them, hey, two, three, four, whatever we're doing. Did you print up the thing that we did for Gavin came in with some?
It should be in the packet.
Yeah, he did a little bit of work. That was something, that was just something that he was, it was a good starting point on that, for the conditional uses. And then I think John wanted to revisit solar, so I printed that was the proposed.
Wouldn't say John wanted.
Oh, I thought you asked, I thought you said, well, anyway.
No, I'd want a board.
The board wanted to.
They're done to pass on that one.
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna jump up to you in town.
Yeah, so. One more, this is on page 88, zoning ordinance.
Is this the one that went forward? Is that what you, we were looking for, the solar in the package?
This was the one that, the consultant helped us with, that large one that.
Right, but is this the one he's saying went, went?
Yeah, yes, it is, I do believe so.
Oh, we gotta have.
It was final. It was final, and then it's still proposed until it was, you know, accepted.
Right, I just wanna make sure this is the one they voted on.
Yeah.
I went through my file, and I had about seven changes.
Yeah.
I actually thought Dave might speak on it, because he was going to object to.
Right, then he left? Still here?
Yeah.
Are you all the way out, or is he in there talking to Jen?
I don't know, he might come back, we start with the other one.
Yeah.
Promise, because there was something about, I can't.
Decommission.
Right, decommissioning, and then.
I know the view thing.
The view thing was an issue with.
Yeah, that's probably DC fix.
Right, we could just take that right out.
Eliminate it, but then.
Chelsea has something she wants to change in the ordinance.
I do?
No, I'm just kidding. Actually, she, we were talking about.
For what?
No, it was, well, we might have forgotten about it, it was the notification and general circulation notification.
And get rid of the newspaper thing.
Yes.
So it's not a change of order to it?
Change, it's just a, yeah, strike something.
Yeah. How would you feel about that? That's a quick and easy one.
What?
Lose the newspaper thingy for notice.
Notice of hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, so we have to run that by people, like, thanks just to me.
No, because it's in the ordinance.
Well, yeah.
Can't we just strike?
Is it seven to 10, or is it?
I don't think it's.
Well, we could change the, we could change the date, right now it's a minimum of 10 days.
Oh, he's right here, we can ask.
Well, if you had it at seven, I can, I can make it every time, but.
So, we have a couple of questions. One question is, we wanna lose or strike out the newspaper thing when we have to do a public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, my, I mean, just my opinion is, you know, I mean, we don't have a paper that circulates really anymore up here, so it's kind of pointless.
Well, that's become an issue because it kind of slows down, you know, we have to wait because we're always missing the deadline, but Gavin said, what, did he say, is it a state thing, or?
Well, I just, I think we should check and be sure that it's not.
We have to check with the league.
Yeah, I mean, I'll check. Definitely, but I mean, I, excuse me, I think, what, I mean, myself, what I'd be looking at is, because everything's changed so much between social media, you know, all the websites and everything else we've got now, you know, anything on paper right now is kind of obsolete, whether or not, if we look in, if you're looking to see if the state's requiring it, if not, then go to, go to an alternate route, so it kind of speeds up your process for you.
So the other one was, because we're gonna start working on some ordinances, and Gavin said you were kind of worried about the solar panel one, and we were trying to figure out what you were.
Oh, there's a bunch of stuff on that, I'm trying, I'm trying to go back to it, I mean, I really wasn't prepared, but I'm sure I can wing, wing this.
Yeah.
That's typically what I do.
One was, I think I'll refresh you, one was one of the charities and why is the town responsible for, that was one of the things that you had talked about at the town meeting. Another one was the visibility.
Visibility issue.
Yep, yep, okay, so I'll start off, we'll start off with the visibility thing first, and make sure, remind me of the other one, because I'll go off somewhere off in left field, and I'll forget about it. So, the, the issue I had when we, when I voted against that, that ordinance change, on that ordinance was, the issue you had with the visibility part of it was tough, because of, you know, things that could happen, like, okay, me being a homeowner, okay, and we know the next door neighbor wants to put in solar panels, and I'm like, well, you know, I'm gonna end up chopping off a piece of my property so you, now you can see him, you know? There's no way to make it so you can't see it, you know, when you have neighbors who can utilize their property as they will, at will. So I, I didn't think it was sustainable to even be able to make that work. That, and it made it so there was a lot of people that had property that would not be able to benefit from that, because of that, that, which, you know, you take Acton's, all hills and this and that, you know, it's almost impossible for most people to put a solar farm in if that was the case. So, anybody on the right-hand side of our goat farm hill, where square, you could see Square Paw, and you could look at that whole side of that hill, you know, that would make that whole, that whole area over there unusable, and anything from Melsom Lake looking over towards Milton Mills Road would be the same thing, you know, so. So I just thought, I thought it was, it was something we, it wouldn't be fair for the typical landowner plus, and there was big ways of getting around it anyways.
So, I'm thinking that it was for commercial and surprises, I don't think that that particular statement applied to the homeowner, it was for somebody coming from somewhere.
Well, and. Yeah, and the, and the, when I, when we were reading it, of course, like, I haven't read this since we, you know, booed it back in the day, not too long ago, I'd have to refresh myself, but that, back when I wrote, I didn't, I didn't see that, I didn't, I don't think that was part of it. I didn't think so, I thought it was pretty much anything that, because pretty much it's all commercial anyways, I mean, if you're, like this one over here on, on H Road, and that's, that's a lease deal, that's.
Well, it's split up, like, we had homeowner.
We had accessory, which is homeowner.
Yes, but.
Medium, which is like.
Exactly, but.
Your next step up.
Okay, I, I understand that.
That's like the large ones.
The large ones, and that's what, that's what my worry was, was, okay, if I have a neighbor down the road that just happens to have a sweet spot that he can put, that they can put their, their solar farm in, but I'm the guy over on the wrong side of the mountain, and I can't bone on mine, because, you know, and he's getting $20,000 a year on his lease, and I can't. I, I just, I just felt that was kind of like, hmm, whether or not we can relook how you guys can make that, you know, make some revisements to that to make it more fair to everybody, you know? That was the only concern that myself and I believe the other selectmen had at the time.
I think the board was concerned about glare.
Um, no, I. We were, I wasn't, I, I don't remember anything about, anything about glare. I was just, the appearance myself, you know, I mean, the appearance in general, you know, like, I think a lot of people, you know, don't like the appearance of them in the first place, so, and that's why, I mean, I understand why you guys are trying to make it so that, you know, it can't be seen from a lake, and I have an awful hard time. If I live on San Bordo and I look at them, I'm no different than someone sitting on the lake and looking at them, so that's the way I look at it, okay? So I think that was the biggest problem I had, was if you could see it from the lake, it's no good, but if it's from my house, it's all right. So, that, that might have been the issue I was having with it. So. It's a toughie.
The last page, 10 and 12.
That's, that's one reason. And. Yeah. So, so that was kind of tough, you know, when you start looking at that stuff there, it's like you're single and out, certain areas are, seem to be more important to visually see it than others, you know? No, I don't think it is, but the, the whole reason why we, we voted it down, and we did, we did make the statement that, you know, pushing through an ordinance, you know, not saying that's what you were doing, but you put through and it doesn't pass the first time, then you can go back and make revisements to it to make it, you know, more, you know, so we'll vote for it, you know? And I believe, I don't know what the vote was on the board, but it was in favor of not passing that, so.
I think we could find a way of alerting.
Well, we could strike those two visibility parts. It doesn't address the charity, but we could just strike those. Because the benefit, I think, is the limits we put on the size.
Yeah.
You know, so we don't have.
Yeah.
Half the town.
I mean, definitely, if you, you know, instead of having one giant row of them, break them up a little bit or whatever, you know, I don't know, that's your job to. break them up a little bit or whatever, you know, um, I don't know, that's your job to figure that out, I'm just, I'm just telling you why I voted against it. Um, and the, what was the first one?
Charity.
Charity.
Oh, decommissioning, yeah, what is it on the town?
So, um, I, I probably talked a little bit about this last year when we were, uh, we were voting on this here, and, so, I know a little bit of the background of some of the stuff that's happened in other towns, you know, where, um, stuff has been dumped in their lap and then they've had to do the cleanups and everything else, okay, and, um, and I'm worried that us as a town maybe venture into uncharted territory by doing this, okay? Now, well, like, okay, and I always use the one up the street, cause this is the one I kinda, I think, kinda got me going on it, um, the solar farm up here, when, you know, the reclamation, I think it was like a ninety-eight thousand dollars or something like that, okay, and, which, which I think, at the same time, we, we gotta discuss that too, on, on the, what we're gonna be charging us at, but, the issue that I have with it is, first of all, um, we're, we're becoming a third party in, in that process. You've got the landowner, then you've got the person leasing the, uh, the solar farm, you know, he's leasing it from the landowner, okay, then we turn around and then we add on a large fee on top of that to, um, um, for the reclamation, okay? I've always been a starch believer that when you become that third party, it makes it easier for somebody to walk away, cause, hey, you've got ninety-eight thousand dollars of my money, it's gonna cost three hundred thousand to do it, here, you can have it, okay, where I look at it where really the person that was responsible for that piece of property is the property owner, okay, and now, if it becomes an issue where, um, in twenty years from now, it doesn't get decommissioned, this and that, um, you know, that's on the landowner, we, we as a town, we vote in every year an article that we don't have to take property because of that, okay, because of the issue that they had, like, they had down in New Dam in Sanford, and you all know what I'm talking about, right? Okay, same thing down there, the guys, it was a, it was a complete disaster and the person just walked away, okay, and eventually, I think it's probably been forty years later and Sanford's now fixed it, they, they, now, how they did it, how they, how, whatever, I don't know, but I know the individual didn't pay for it, but, um, so one of my concerns is, first of all, we're becoming a third party. The other, the other concern is, of course, one thing that I'd really like to see is you guys work on some sort of ordinance where, start revising some of these ordinances to the point where we can get stuck in consistency on what people are paying for their reclamation's, everybody, and how they're gonna pay for the reclamation's, okay? Um, you know, right now, we're talking right now, there's three different ways of doing it, I think there's three, okay, you got your cash out, you know, where, you know, like, these, these people put up, um, ninety-eight thousand dollars of cash, they're, they're sitting in our bank for twenty years, okay, or you can get a bank credit, or you can do a bond. Now, at first, you know, the bond, the, the most expensive way is the cash out, you know, and, and the issue I don't like about the cash out for any of the businesses moving into town, when it comes to that, is you take ninety-eight thousand dollars out of a large project like that, that could be an end-all, okay, now, if you wanna end it, you know, that's a good way to do it, but if, um, you know, that's a lot of money upfront for these people, I believe there's probably one project in town, off the top of my head there, that may have stopped that project because of just that, okay, just the startup of, you know, the, uh, reclamation part of it. Um, then you got the bank credit and you got the bond, they're not really a lot different, but they are. Um, myself, uh, what I would like to see is everybody go to a bond where you guys write up an ordinance that, um, you know, you guys do a bond where this bond has to be recorded once a year, okay, where it comes to, um, our, our, the code officer's assistant or treasurer, one or the other, okay, but in your ordinance, write in some, you know, okay, this is what happens if the bond is not renewed in this periods of time, do, 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 you know, fines, this and that, da, 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 that's all what you guys can figure out, okay? Because you, instead of asking for ninety-eight thousand dollars worth of cash money, you can ask for a three hundred thousand dollar bond, because the person is gonna buy a three hundred thousand dollar bond, it's only gonna spend a few thousand dollars, okay, where, and then you probably got more money to actually do the reclamation than what you had in the first place. The problem you're gonna have is, is you have to make sure that that would be, um, something that is gonna be, um, every year, it's just like the liability insurance for every, all the subcontractors in town, every year, they have to be renewed and, and they make the phone calls, this and that, but you have to make it so there's penalties, okay, and I think you have to put that in an ordinance to make it so everybody runs by the same thing, because right now, we've got cash, uh, bank credits, and I don't think we have any bonds that I know of, but I know there's bank credits and some of those bank credits haven't been checked in years, so you might as well not even done the reclamation.
They were very minimal.
Yeah, and they're very minimal, I mean, at that, so, you know, just being a liaison, do you, you know, I'm not speaking for the other two, but I've been putting a lot of thought into this, you know, and, um, and, uh, I, I like to see everything getting back on an even keel and you get it in black and white, that way there, it's easier for you guys and it's easier on our side of it too, um, and the individual that walks in the door cause they know what they're looking at.
I, I, we looked at that before and for some reason, we weren't allowed to do it. We wanted to go to just one instead of the three.
It was. We want consistency with.
Right.
We've done the previous projects, which I think was the.
But I thought we did talk about changing the.
Somehow it ended up in just cash.
Right, when I had first cut off, came on, I was told it was cash escrows only, and then it had changed, I don't know how, but it did.
We can, you could change that by an ordinance.
Right.
And, because like I said, there's, there's some that are doing bank credit, some are cash, you know, um, we'll use the pits, you know, some pits are being charged this much per acre, this pit's being charged this much per acre, uh, there's not a lot of consistency and, which is not your fault, I mean, there's many, many boards before you, you know, that have done this and, and then it worked up through the ranks and, um, but we, I really like to see the, um, the planning board, as they're looking through their ordinances, um, start revamping something there to make it so that we can get on a consistent basis.
Does the state change their reclamation fees every year?
I'm not sure of that.
Okay.
But, you know, um, but the state, you know, the, with, especially with what they're charging per acre, like on pits, what they're charging per acre after ten, I don't, Jason, do they charge for, uh, under ten acre, do they have a charge?
No, they, they take over at ten acres, that's when they jump in and start requiring the four thousand dollars per acre bond.
Yeah.
Or, I think they're a bond or letter credit.
Yeah.
Do we set that amount?
That's the state's amount, we.
No, no, the, for our.
Yes, you do.
Reclamation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what, last week, there was a mention in, in the audience that, selectmen, we do not set, you guys set that, all I'm doing is giving you recommendations right now.
That was, came out of the first comment of the.
Yes, it did, and that was, that was a, that was a misspoken statement, and, um, so, um, the planning board decides the, the charges and the fees, what I'm asking is, um, for this board to start setting fees for, you know, more, uh, consistent fee for everybody, that way there, there's really, you, instead of having, when, when people getting up last week and say, oh, wow, that's gonna be a lot of money and it was only this much for that guy and this and that, so we can get away from that.
Right.
That's what we're gonna get away from.
Well, I think we just found out, honestly, what, in the last couple of months, what the state fee was.
Yeah, and, you know, doing some research and stuff, and I, I believe Jason's doing a good job, you know, same idea was, you know, with our code office stuff, looking at our building permits, same idea, you, you wanna be consistent with the other towns, you know, I mean, you don't have to do exactly what they do, but you at least have it, have some consistency to make it look like, you know, we're, we're running a, a straight, a straight ship here, you know, so, um, but, I mean, that's, that's, that's all I'm, I would like to see. So, I mean, you guys are gonna be working on your, uh, your ordinances and all that, um, I, you know, you can start on your, um, solar panel thing, see if you can make that work this time, and, um, see if you guys can, uh, come up with some sort of, uh, figure out whether or not the bonds and this and that, and, uh, obviously, we gotta make sure everything's legit and legal, but I, I believe at the end of the day, uh, we can do a bond and we just have to make sure that it's in an ordinance and make sure that that ordinance has, uh, defined, um, penalties if this isn't done and consequences.
Dave, I got a question, I don't know if you can answer it, if it's something for legal, can I take a grandfather, can we, um, require that a, a pit that's been grandfathered or a pit that's been running for the last whatever, can we require all extraction, um, mineral extraction facilities to come back in to get everybody on the same page? Or is it, if, or is it if they've been approved?
I'm gonna judge them two grand and it's going to six.
Yeah, well, I'm not, yeah, I'm talking, like, I'm even talking about operating hours and, and things like that.
And it might.
Or is that something that's kind of a very big gray area or not even gray or?
I think that would be a legal.
Yeah.
Question, because I'll just say, okay, say I was the one to own the pit and I bought, there's two different things, if somebody else bought the pit, there might be something you might be able to do.
Right, when it changes ownership.
I'm not sure, but if you're the original owner of that pit.
Right.
And it was, you had already been voted in and then the ordinance changed after the fact, I believe you'd be grandfathered.
Right.
And that's the problem we have, is we have so many pits that are older, but then the problem we have is, we'll take the older pits and they'll be bought out by another company, so they're taking the old, they're taking the grandfather with them, you know?
Well, if you, if you look at some of our.
Address that.
If you look at some of our, our fees, if they were getting charged three thousand dollars an acre, it's, it's cheaper for them to walk away.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's what, that's why I'm saying, if we were able to bring them back in, because right now, ninety percent of our, of our extraction is way undervalued when it comes to reclamation, like, you wouldn't even start your truck for it.
Yeah, see, I mean, I, and I might be an odd man out here, but I, I, I'm just, I'm not a fan of the reclamation itself, I would rather see some sort of fee.
Right.
Where it actually, um, would, would actually help the town of Acton, because the reclamation doesn't at all, it makes us a third party or a second party or whatever, depends how many people are involved, okay, and say, uh, this pit, they, uh, they go bankrupt, they walk, they, they hit the streets and there's this big hole there and we got, now we have this money set aside, now, we, we got one pit that's like five thousand bucks, I mean, five thousand dollars, they ain't gonna pay for a day with my machine and my trucks and those, I tell you that, and, uh, so you're not getting much done for that, so, you'd be better off just walking away, where instead of doing some sort of, um, uh, you know, mineral extraction fee upfront, you know, um, you know, I could see something like that where, because, you know, the reclamation is what it is, I mean, I know everybody wants to make sure it's all, you know, pretty and everything when it's done, but the, the, what we should be doing is, as these people are, um, mining these operations, you know, they're supposed to be reclaiming so much as they go, if they're not doing that, and like the city of Sanford, for instance, I know one operation down there that wasn't doing it, they were threatening to shut down the operation until that was done, you don't need a reclamation at that point, cause you're gonna shut them down, so, the only time the reclamation comes into effect would be the last four acres they've got, you know, so, um, but it, but the reclamation fees really don't help us at the end, I think it hurts us at the end, because we'll, we'll end up spending more money to do, do the reclamation than what is usually added to. So if you do.
How is the fee upfront gonna?
It'd be like an impact fee.
That's not gonna cover a reclamation.
No, no, exactly, um, at the end of the day, um, you know, the reclamation, what's that getting, given the town of Acton, you know, making sure there's some grass on it at the end, maybe, but, um, you know, impact fee would at least give us something there, you know, for the roads and everything else, you know, that, you know, that everybody's worried about, so, uh, where the reclamation doesn't do anything for us. And if, and if the jobs, you know, and, and, and the, the mining operation is being, um, looked after like it should be, most of that reclamation should be already done, if, if you really think about it, you know, so, um, because at the end of the day, if the reclamation isn't done, that's when you get fees and everything else, um, that you guys put in your ordinance to make it so that there'll be penalties if you don't do it, and that's when you get your town lawyers and everything else, you'd be better off doing that than turning around and spending tens of thousands of dollars and doing a reclamation, cause you didn't have enough in the first place. Just an opinion. You got anything else for me?
Right now, I think we're good, unless you guys.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you guys know that I'm not speaking for the whole board, I'm just speaking as the liaison and as a, uh, individual that, um, you know, I kinda have an idea, these pits and stuff and how it all works, and I do believe that all the pits in town, everybody's gonna write the user property, this and that, I, I don't like overregulation any more than anybody else does, some of the stuff that I'm seeing is taking away some of that regulation and adding some other stuff in, but I think at the end of the day, town of Acton could really use a little bit of a change-up in trying to figure out how we're gonna at least get something back for, you know, the money that we're having to put back into these roads and everything else, and I think an impact fee would be much more impactful to the town of Acton. I know other towns that do it on their housing sides of it.
I know other towns do it for mineral extraction too, and I think they do, so when these guys buy a piece of property, um, it's surveyed, they know how much gravel's in, they're not buying something and hoping that there's gravel there, they know, they've, they've done their test pits, they know how much is in the ground, um, and then they're required to, to pay a fee to the town for the amount of gravel that they're planning on extracting, and it might be a yearly or, I don't think it's a lump sum thing, it's usually, you know, the yearly thing.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a bunch of different ways you can do that, um, you know, I know of some, um, you know, people that I've worked for, when we bought material out of pits, where we've gone in and, you know, we've had them put, have a surveyor go in and say, okay, there's sixty thousand yards here, boom, surveyed, okay, you pay your impact fee on that, okay, when that's done, that's reclaimed, they wanna move on, you give them another impact fee for the next hundred and twenty thousand yards or whatever, you can do that, okay, you can't, you don't grant, grant the impact fee, uh, you don't grant the next spot until the impact fee is paid, you can also do something like that, I, I'm just throwing some ideas out here, you know, um, I'm just, I just, the reclamation stuff doesn't make a lot of sense to me, at the end of the day, if the job is being done right the first place and is being inspected, you don't have to worry about the impact fee, I mean, not the impact fee of the reclamation, so, just food for thought.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
So, while we're still talking about like mineral extractions or anything like that, I mean, I think something that should be brought up is, um, for, since if we can't bring in existing, um, facilities or whatever you wanna, however you wanna do it, um, that moving forward, every five years, they come in to review their conditions or they provide us with a, at some point, they provide us with a certified survey showing what, what's open, um, what's, what's they're allowed, you know, what their slopes are on their reclamation, if they have reclaimed, you know, done anything like that, cause other than that, I, I have no way, I can't go out there and tell you, you got five point seven acres open and you're only allowed to have five, you know, um, that way, at least if they're over, when it comes to surveying time, they know they gotta reclaim it, so, um, a lot of fingers get pointed at, at my department of enforcing, but I don't have the weight to enforce it, um, I can't stop these people from operating, so if they're in violation, I still can't shut them, I can't put a stop work order on, and there's nothing like that in the ordinance, um, I can only fine them so they can keep up and running as much as they want and pay the fines as they're, as they're going, but I can't physically put a red sticker on them, not that I want to, but put a red sticker on them and say, hey, you guys are way, you know, you're out in left field and I need you guys to stop until you get, you know, up to speed with everything, um, I know another town, I spoke with another town, um, they're getting, they're doing the five-year, every year, you gotta come in and review, revisit your, um, uh, your conditions, but they're getting away from that and they're going to a yearly licensing, so that if you're, if you're in violation, you're not gonna get, you're not, your license isn't renewed, um, that'll be a touchy one, trying to get that one passed, but.
But that, but wouldn't that take the picks that were done?
Yeah.
Twenty, forty years ago, that are still operating under their conditional, up to speed and up to, to law and standard?
I still don't know how that works, there's a lot of questions that I gotta talk to town legal about, just ideas, um, that I've been having conversations with other, um, code enforcement departments and land use departments, um, just because I, I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to find a happy medium between the residents and the, the pit owners and my department and I just, it's hard to get there when I can't do much. I mean, they, everybody wants me to do something, but I can't do anything. I don't really know, you know, I don't know where to go with that one, so.
So, as when Jason was just talking about the surveying, we had talked about that a little bit. And the idea of the survey, because what is, I, I don't, as a selectman, well, my code officer, oh, they're trying to play surveyor. Okay, and try to measure out and how many is five acres here and this and that, so what I suggested was to have whoever the pit owner is, excuse me, guess I'm talking too much. Whoever the pit owner is, okay, when you approve this plan, to have them section, no different than house lots in a subdivision, okay? You have them plot the area that they're gonna, they're gonna mine. Okay, that way there, you know where your five acres are. And then, in your, in, in your agreement with them, okay? You know, have something where they have 30 days to reclaim this section before, you know, while, while they open up the new section, but they can't mine until that's done or whatever, okay? But you, you, to, to get it off his plate and liability on us, on whether or not it's being done right or not, you, you know, have them go and have a survey company mark out the mining areas they're doing so they know what they're reclaiming and what has to be reclaimed before they can start this. You know, that's really something that, you know, we, we should be looking at, so he's, he's got enough to do than trying to play surveyor.
Does he charge for a yearly license per se?
I haven't gotten that far. I was just, they were just telling me that that's what they're, that's the way they're moving. And I think that, that city, um, is, they're still in the, the working stages of that, of, of putting everything together. I just know that they're, like I said, they, they are, as of right now, they do the five year, um, every time, and then you have to come in and, and review the conditions and they're getting rid of that because of some of the issues they've had. They want more, they want more authority. You know, it's like a bar. If they keep on messing up, the select board is not gonna renew their liquor license.
We can reject liquor license, but the state can override us, at least we can say that.
And I'm not saying that's the way to go. I'm just saying what I've, what I've, some of the conversations I've had. And I don't even know if that's something that the board wants to tackle in the time that we have.
I think the gravel pits are important. There's so many in town. They're all running out.
Oh, it's, it's a point, and it's a, I mean, it's a huge business for this area, you know? People make a living off of it, you know, and that's the last thing I wanna do is, is affect somebody's living.
But to make it fair for everybody is what the idea is, not to stop anybody.
No.
And then to try to appease the needs of, because you have two diametrically opposed industries. You know, you have the people on the lakes. We have, we have to do something for that as well. I don't know what we do about traffic, if anybody has any ideas. I mean, any of those, right, but I mean, controlling the speeds of the
Well, you could bring Jamali back.
No, there's, there's technology.
The problem we're gonna have is, is like the speed limits and stuff, you know, that, that's all dictated by the state. So, um, you know, we can't turn around and say, okay, we're gonna drop the speed limit or we're gonna do this and that. That has to have a, a speed limit survey from the state of Maine.
I wouldn't try to drop the speed.
I had a guy, uh, I had a guy on the H road who really was asking me, and I told him to go to the select board or go to the road committee. He was asking to see if there's a way to have no jay braking on the H road.
So, yeah, yeah.
I just don't know, because everybody's got different equipment. Some people might need that jay brake.
Well, no, no, I mean, the, the, the problem with that whole deal is, you know, I got big trucks, right, and I like my jake brake too, but all my trucks have stock exhaust on them, okay? And I know exactly what the individual's talking about because at 5:30 in the morning when I'm loading up, that truck's coming down over the hill, which it probably shouldn't be at 5:30 in the morning loaded, but he is, okay? I can hear that truck coming down the H road. Now, now, me being a, a large truck owner and, uh, I don't like DOT chasing my trucks around. So what I do is I try to not make ourselves as noticeable as possible, okay? You don't speed, you don't run cars off the road, and you don't run your jake brake at 5:30 in the morning to irritate the neighbors. Okay, you just don't do that stuff. So, that, that is, and I would hate to see, we've had people come to the, uh, select board before and say, I want a, an ordinance with no engine brakes in town, no jake brakes. Unfortunately, it's not fair to the guys who use them correctly, okay? And they are, and they're an option that's put on a truck, you know, was federally allowed to do. You know, they come stock with those. It's not like something you just add on, you know, like when a little fork came, you put on your car, the angle's boom, boom. You know, it's, it's, it's supposed to be like that, you know, so that, that myself, um, is a tricky one because you have people who abuse that and then you have people who don't. It's a safety issue. Me coming down that hill at 100,000 pounds, because that's what you're weighed up at a tri-axle truck, without my engine brake is now a safety issue. Because, but because some knucklehead is doing it at 5:30 with straight pipes, that's a common sense issue. Okay, so that is something there that has to be addressed through, should be, that could be addressed to us. We can, we could have the sheriff go up and explain to the pit owner that, or, or do what we've done before and call DOT, which we don't, I don't like doing, okay? Um, but unfortunately, it's illegal to do what he's doing in the first place. So you don't have to have an ordinance to stop them, something that's being, you know, that's illegal. You just have to have someone, um, you know, enforce it.
But then who's gonna sit out there and enforce it if there was a per se ordinance? That's the other issue. You gotta be kinda caught in the act.
Well, that's it too, you know, I mean, when I run my jake brake, you won't know the difference. You know, it's not as loud as some of the trucks that just drive by without using it. So, um, but you know, we, our sheriff is gonna be running around listening for a jake brake. Uh, and probably ain't gonna be sitting on Go Farm Hill at 5:30 in the morning either.
Do you have a sheriff?
We have a sheriff, yeah, we still have one for at least a year, so. So, you know, that's another thing. Oh, I mean, we couldn't, you know, we could do a jake brake ordinance, but I don't, I don't, I don't believe it's right. I, I think we will have, and that individual has a very, very, a good complaint. You know, because I can hear that truck coming all the way up 109 in the morning, all the way by the pond shed. Without the jake brake, he's too loud. So that's, that's a DOT issue. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there. But that would be something we'd have to do anyways.
Does the town reverse to, to putting up those, um, I've mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again, some of them have cameras. You know, you can't get up at 5:30 in the morning, get up, take pictures of everybody that's speeding, but their, that camera does that for you.
You talking about on their trucks?
I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about, um, this one in Wakefield, when you, when you go in, you go past, um, you come in off of 16.
Okay, yeah.
And it says Village District, 30 miles an hour.
Yeah.
It says, please slow down, and it flashes. And I know there's some people that wanna speed up and do all that, but if someone is excessively speeding, which is what the complaint is, catch those people that are doing that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I don't think it'd be that expensive.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, when we, when we, we had the sheriff go up and do all the patrolling because we had complaints of the big trucks going too fast, this and that. And a lot of the times what'll end up happening is a big truck looks like they're going a lot faster than a little car is, but most of the times a little car going faster than the big truck is. That's what he found. He found more speeders in cars than needed trucks. So, um, but the camera, I don't know if that would be a good idea or not. I mean, who's gonna maintain it?
I think they come with those, um, so what she's talking about, they, those little portable toe behind, a cot hose behind it, and then it has a camera.
They already have one.
Well, we do and we don't. Well, we, we're actually looking for a new one because our last one, they're kinda crapped out on us. So I think we are in the process of trying to find another one right now. But there could be something we could look into. I don't know legally whether or not it would, it's something you could give anybody a ticket for. I don't know. We'd have to ask our sheriff. Yeah. Really, what we, what I proposed, I've been trying to propose is bringing our sheriff in. Because the problem is our sheriff, they don't do commercial, okay, and big trucks. So, you know, they don't know what to look for and this, they don't know if the exhaust is legal or not, you know, they're, you know, chasing speeders and stuff like that. But, um, bring him in and, you know, give him, you know, have him meet with, you know, maybe some state police and have them give some ideas of what they should be looking for on some of these heavy trucks. And at the same time, we just gotta, we gotta ramp up, um, you know, patrol in that area. And, um, which has been kinda difficult because, you know, we've been trying to do our, um, contract here for the last couple, three months, finally got it signed up. But we have a lost service, but we didn't know what we were gonna have. But, um, in the future, we gotta figure out one way, how we're gonna patrol that area. Because honestly, when those trucks hit those roads, in my eyes, that's not your problem anymore. That's our problem. So your job is to be restricting that pit to how many loads a day, which, good luck with that. And, um, you know, when they can start. And after that, you know, those trucks, when they hit those roads, it's just like mine, it's no different. You know, I think you've probably heard it before, when it comes to, um, my heavy use tax and everything else, I gotta write to drive every road in this town. Okay, that guy that comes over the hill at 5:30 in the morning, he can do that. Unfortunately, he's coming out of the pit too early. That's when it becomes an issue on this side of it. Okay, but if he's hauling logs from Wakefield and heading for Sanford at 5:30 in the morning, we can't stop that. So, uh, so that's the only, that's the thing that you guys should be aware about is limiting them when they start, how many trucks a day they, they can pull out of there to, to, that's how you guys solve the traffic problem and, uh, to a point, but the speeding part, that's our problem.
Funny thing is, most of them say they don't speed.
Well, yeah.
If they're in an empty truck, they're speeding. I see them in the morning.
The cameras, the cameras, um, I don't know if I said this in public, but, um, my wife got run off the road by one of those big trucks. And I called the individual up. He says, I got cameras, great, you know? And then called me back and said, no, it didn't happen, your wife's a liar, da, 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 but then it wouldn't let me see the camera. Okay, so the camera really wasn't any good in my part, you know? So, um, yeah, I know, but you, you're gonna have to, whenever you put, you, you have something like that, you're gonna have to have somebody maintaining that, putting it out, whether or not it's our sheriff or whatever. Yeah, or even a permanent one, you know, and I maintenance everything else. I just don't know how that all work out. Like I said, when it hits the road, um, that's, that's a DOT sheriff and our, our problem. So you, you guys' job should be trying to figure out how to get them, uh, from their pit to 109 on a state road as fast as possible. The closest route, not fast as possible, the closest route. That would, that, you know, for the impact of our roads. That's, that's, that's what I would do. And leave the rest to us.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
So I, just based on what we've talked about, I don't know if there's any that are missing, but we've got one change on the newspaper notice. So we should find that and, you'll have to check with the lawyer on all these, but
Sure.
They go to some electronic medium website, town website, whatever it is. We've got Gavin's proposed change at 6632. We've got the solar, if we wanna take that on. I think, um, an easy fix for part of the, uh, issues last time is just removing paragraphs 10 and 12. We'd have to talk about that suratee thing and how we address that. And, and do that in concert with, uh, the pits, which is another one. I don't know if we can eat the whole elephant here in this one time, but there are some things we can do. Oh, before that, we should take that paragraph on that says there are three ways of paying and, and just go to bond. And then the pit things, I mean, I've heard a lot of things here that there's some we can probably do and some not. You know, impact fees, yearly licensing, requiring in the process, uh, you know, the, the house lot thing that we talked about, yeah. And then they'd have to come in and report on that each year to get a license updated. That might be a, a bridge too far in the short time we have. We might be able to do some of it. So those are the five kinda things I've heard.
And then there was something else in the ordinance that we talked about in pits, about, uh, what was it, temporary structure being removed. Did you find it? What page?
I thought that was pretty clear. I think.
We only require the addition of one word.
What paragraph? So you're saying add temporary before building too? That's an easy one. We could do that.
Temporary shelters or temporary buildings?
Yes.
Yeah. It's implied.
Yeah.
You're not gonna make them take down a permanent building.
Come up so many times, I think we need to fix it.
Yeah. That's an easy one.
I think you just brought up on the pit that we're working on now.
Yeah.
It's all about definition.
Does he have six? Is that what you come up with?
It gives me six. It is a lot. Well, that, your change is pretty straightforward, I think. I think the bond thing would be pretty straightforward. You know, we're just eliminating the other types.
I think the solar is pretty well done. We spent so much time
Yeah.
Try it again.
Yeah, everybody should read that. Infer what the change would be next time.
It'd just be the, the pits licensing or all that. That would be the bulk of the work.
Yeah, that's a big one. I don't know if we wanna cut that up into bite-sized chunks.
Yeah, they've been working on that one for, I think, a couple of years, so it's not something that they're, they've been just throwing together overnight. Nor do I think we should. I'm just saying it's, I'm just throwing out ideas of what to be thinking about. I mean, I'd be, yeah. So I don't know.
Well, we could bring a couple of them in and see what they think they offered it when the moratorium was happened.
I really would like to see the town be provided every so often with a certified survey of showing me what's open, what's, what's open to, compared to what's allowed. Or, um, you know, I, I would like to see something like that.
Yeah, that's the process. So when they come in, they
Right.
Say, we're gonna go from here to here to here.
Yeah.
Then we renew the license or whatever it is every year when they show us that survey. But getting that written in the next couple of months.
Can you make that, can, is there, is that something, that's a condition that can be made on current things or no? How does that work?
I was trying to go back to that NMA workshop because he said that we didn't have, we could put conditions, we could change those.
It's, I just, I just fear that situation, well, they have, they weren't, that wasn't required in the past and now you're making it happen, but it's
Yeah, I don't know legally if that's.
And it's not that I'm trying to put more conditions on one person. That's kinda what I'm like, looking to see go forward for everybody, not just one, one person. It's just, you know, we're talking about euphromity and all this other stuff and I can't do anything about the people that have, that I had, or the planning board had something to do with, you know, 10, 20, 30 years ago.
So you wanna start with what Gavin has written up so that we can at least work through these?
We should do Gavin. We should do Gavin's, I think.
Pretty straightforward.
That's one down.
I'll have the other ones, like the small ones where we're just adding a word or striking some words. We'll, we'll draw something up for the.
Yeah. So you heard that one on page fifty four?
I just wrote it down. Yeah, I got my.
Temporary before the word golden.
Yeah. Do you have a copy, Jeff?
Sure.
So pretty much, um, I just added some verbiage under the conditional use permits, six point six point three. Point two existing conditional use structure. And, but, um, whatever parcel of tract of land subject to a conditional use permit in the ownership or lease holder, the operator shall provide proof of financial and technical ability as well as review of the conditions with the code enforcement office. Proof includes, but is not limited to certificate of insurance citing the town acting to renew any bonds, letters of credit, or cash escrow pertaining to the property. And we talked about this, it's just, we have this where the piece of land has conditional use permit. And the conditions on it and the, the piece of land changes ownership or control, so to speak, and, um, at which time the, the new operator should, should come to the town, but it hasn't really been happening. So I feel like if we, uh, put, put over something in the ordinance that, uh, that would help. Um, and I just wanna put it right at the end of the section. Yeah, it hasn't happened because I tried to with the two pits that were purchased recently. And when I had spoke to legal about having them come in, he pretty much said, where in your ordinance does it state that you can do that? He says, cause it doesn't. Yeah. And that puts you in, so you pretty much said you can't do that. So adding it, this will allow it, them to have to come in. Yeah, and if it, if it doesn't change it or they see anything, you know, grammatically or anything, um, not solo in this language. It's just a, for poke draft proposal, pretty much.
Yeah, I think it's good, Gavin. I, I, the only thing that makes me wonder now is if we do change the existing ordinance to take out, um, letters of credit and cash, how do we word that?
Well, I'm not a hundred percent on taking out those options. I mean, I don't see why having those three options in the ordinance is, is a detrimental thing. We can just, as long as we're consistent on which one we use.
But I think that's the issue. We haven't, but we have been on cash, but, you know, with the dollars going up, cash isn't gonna be, it's not gonna be viable.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I'm just not sure if we, if we need to take those other two out. If you just, what, could you just leave it as, uh, if a surety is required, you know? That brings you, that covers everything, right? Instead of using cash, credit or.
Yeah.
Or bond, you would just state if, if a sure, cause we have conditional use that doesn't require a surety. So if it, if it requires a surety. Renewal money surety pertaining to the property.
Yeah.
That's fine with me. Makes it shorter. Oh, yeah, every one of them. Yeah, we did last time too. He did a, he did a.
I already said it all the way before we put it up on the wall.
Yeah, yeah. We gotta draft something before I can get to him first anyway though, cause he's just gonna tell me to put it on paper. Right. I know. So that's what we did last time is we had all the pros, pro stuff, proposed things, and then I sent him over. And he inked it up for me and sent it back. Yeah. I was wondering too if we wanted to put something in it under the conditional use permits that says like if they, if they're not abiding by their current conditions, then we're not gonna give them a change of conditional use permit. So to speak, I mean, it's just an idea.
Permit is revoked?
Well, no, we wouldn't revoke their existing permits. If they came in for a change of condition, you say they want, uh.
Hauling asphalt.
Do something, do something different than they've been doing, but it was similar. It would work, but, you know, they had their, their conditions existent weren't, weren't being followed like they hadn't revegetated or whatever it was. I don't think we have anything in there that says that they need to actually be following their existing conditions and wanting to get a change of conditional use. I mean, they would have to have documented violations, you know, other than just hearsay. Right, right. And I don't know if I'd wanna combine it with this. I like that, the way, I like the way it is right now. I don't mind adding up something else, but. Well, I mean, I feel like there should be something like that in here.
Well, I think penalties is something we need to address in general.
Yeah. Yeah, I kinda like that. I mean, it might be more effective than, um, current. With duplicating state, state records. It's a line for a clean sheet. So if we did something different, we'd be done with it.
Yep.
But like the one that just said about, uh, reapplying for new conditions. People don't, lack of better terms, complain to Jason's office. I mean, how far, how much would it inundate Jason's office with complaints?
Well, that's why we need to.
You know what I mean?
Get it off of his shoulders and have them give us like the survey.
Well, no, no. Well, this is for anybody, right? Reapply conditions.
Well, they have to do that.
Right.
But then we could turn down the request if they weren't keeping up with the existing conditions imposed.
Right, but.
What section?
It was in the bill of the section on the general. It was under, it's unlooking for.
Yeah, they still require us verifying that they're not. Which is, which is. Yeah. Yeah, like I said, you're gonna have to have a documented paper trail.
No, it's just inundate Jason's office. If people were to complain.
It's just different. If we wanted to do it like that, it would give extra work.
That's what already is down there.
Nothing else to do, right?
Visiting the site.
Okay.
You know, take them half an hour. These are in their part down. But it could be something formal. Well, if it's a violation, that's something I should be doing anyway. It's not more work really, you know? If somebody's doing something or a violation is being recorded, if I don't, you know, look into it, then I'm not doing my job anyway. So. Right, right. Do you usually document those things anyway? Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. They get a good old red folder.
The new program has something on it too for it.
Yeah. Yeah, and our, like Dave was just stating, our new software that I, we're using, um, has, um, two programs, one's for permit management, one's for code enforcement that deals with all violations and documents that you, you know, I go out there with, um, my, my iPad and take the pictures and everything like that. So everything gets reported and stayed digitally in the cloud. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I think.
So you think we have six warrant articles?
Yeah, the pit one, we're gonna have to see if we can chunk it. We're not gonna be able to write that whole thing, but maybe there's.
Pieces of it.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to go back and think and maybe there's a piece we can get this year and then expand on it next year.
I'll have my, uh, my office print up some, um, other mineral extraction ordinances and maybe you can just pull a chunk out of something.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Some verbiage of some sort, you know, see if they have anything that's, that hits on what we're talking about right now.
The, uh.
When I said, when I said my office, that's, I mean, you.
I knew what I meant. I'm writing fast.
And the sixth one is easy. That's a one word addition.
Mm-hmm.
I'm willing to go home and look at the newspaper thing, see if I can come up with something.
Well, right now we, we require, I put it on, uh, the town website and believe in, I didn't realize there was so many people that actually looked at the website, but a lot of people do look at the town website. A lot of people have social media, but I know there are a lot of people that don't have, um, social media or even that and things like that, but, um, we post, we posted on, you know, the, the bulletin boards up here in the, you know, my office and in the town. Yeah. I don't know where else to go with it, you know, because we, nobody, there's not too many people getting, um, a daily paper or a weekly paper. I don't even know if, and I used to have the journal, used to have the Journal Tribune or the Portland Press Herald, but I think the Portland Press Herald is the only one that runs, but who did, I don't know if many people get it.
They can't deliver it. Well, I'll, um, you know, it's gonna have to go to the lawyer anyway, else I'll take that one and see if I can come up with something to get to everybody to take a look at. And then I think we should all go back and look at the solo one.
I mean, even if we did the, we changed, I don't know if it has to be ten days, but if we just change it to seven days, then I meet the, the time requirements every time because that, the free paper that the town used or not free to us for advertising, but the, but free to the public, that, that runs every Thursday. Now, my meetings are on Thursdays. If my meetings were on Wednesdays, I could have it, but they're not. They're on Thursdays. So, uh, I missed that whole, you know, so if it was seven days, I'm always gonna, I'm gonna always be able to meet that deadline because it's minimum of two weeks between us.
Isn't there a time period where it's like out of print for a short, like?
Well, holidays, like you just, Christmas was, it was out for like three, two or three weeks, was it?
Yeah, cause we had.
Two weeks.
New Year's Eve too.
So holidays, that's a different situation.
We just made the Christmas one.
Yeah. I don't know. I shouldn't, you just get rid of the newspaper, but we'll see if we can.
We could send out a general text. The town could send out a general text like the school does when there's no school about a public hearing.
It's not coming from my phone.
And we can send them all at five o'clock in the morning and wake everybody up.
His phone?
Yeah.
My hall.
Well, he's up at five. We'll have to go early at four.
Get ready for two thousand text messages.
Did you have any other proposed?
What about the storage?
That's kind of it.
Yeah.
We thought we were covered upon second review, which is why we didn't put it.
Well, is this work, there was like mistype of it. But when it, it came up, cause that was when Ken was still around and was the secretary for just for my assurance, said, oh, workshop.
Christina.
Christina.
People said.
Christina.
Yeah.
I don't even know the girl. I still don't know her name.
It was that era.
Well, you could do, you're talking about, we could revisit, um, the actual use chart. And we could revisit that, cause I just looked at it today before coming up and what we had proposed didn't even agree with what we had on the over twenty-five hundred. So if you wanna do that, make a recommendation on the, on the zones that are currently no. On the use chart at two, seven, three. Yeah, it's no in rural, it's no in critical rural, no in resource protection, no in shoreline and no in good philosophy. No, that's what it currently is. Yeah, greater than twenty-five hundred.
This is for J or I?
Storage units.
Oh, well, professional businesses have it less than twenty-five hundred.
Yeah. So we were, we were trying to address somebody wanting to do a five thousand building and we said, well, it's there. But then the issue becomes, well, some, I forget who it was, somebody was in the rural and it says no, so they had to go lower.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We just did that off of Milton Mills.
Right, and that.
Yeah.
And I have a guy who's talking to my office right now about, um, relocating his business to a property, um, and it's not an in-home business. It's not in-home occupation. It's, um, another business. I'd like to tell you guys more about it, but I gotta keep it. But there's, there's more properties on, so we're at a twenty-five hundred, um, min, uh, maximum twenty-five hundred square feet. There's multiple buildings on this property that would, if it was someone's house, it would be fine, but the garage throws him over and it's a detached garage. It throws it over the twenty-five hundred square feet. So then it puts in slight site plan review, which doesn't allow him to, to purchase this and, and come in for an application because it's rural. Um, so if, my question I guess would be is if he's, if the garage has nothing to do with the business and it's just for stor, personal storage, this, is there a way, does the board, how does the board look at that?
Well, that's not a professional or business service, which is what we're talking about here.
Well.
So it would fall somewhere else.
Well, what has, he has a professional business service.
But if the building is, that you're talking about.
Well, the building has a house, shed, the, the house is like in, in, you know, has a house and two sheds and then a garage. The house would be the part of the business, not the garage. So, but is it the whole property, everything on the property? You see what I'm saying? Cause it's like twenty-eight hundred square feet. If you took the garage, the house, the sheds, there's twenty-eight hundred square feet of area being covered on that property. But if that property is to be used for that one entity, it doesn't fall under the land use chart. It's, it falls under J, cause it's over two hundred, twenty-five hundred square foot, which would not allow that.
If you include the garage that has nothing to do with the business.
Okay. I'm just, just trying to, trying to figure it out. I'm telling him to move forward with it. If, cause if he can't do it, then he's not, he's not even gonna, cause I didn't, if you, I didn't know if the board would consider all the pieces, all the structures on that, how, on that property.
Not if it's not part of the business.
Okay, I'm just, I, I. We just did that auto repair place off of, uh, other side of Milton Mills Road, eleven and going up the hill. Her husband?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was the, the second. Right. I just didn't know.
That we didn't think it considered.
Was for storage or something, so we didn't look at that. Okay.
Another storage place that we.
No, I see what you're saying. I didn't really, I wasn't thinking like that. Okay.
Right. But there's other buildings on that property.
If you use just the garage and the garage has your office, you don't have to use the house, right?
Right, right. Either way, whatever the business applies to.
Okay. Yeah, depends on the business. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But I think if the restriction that people are seeing is not having, uh, not being allowed in the rural, we could make it a, if you wanted to, make, that could be the change. Make that an S instead of an N. I think we'd still wanna keep them out of shoreline.
Right, oh, sure, there's a lot of, but there's a lot of property that's in rural that, you know, somebody could use an entity on it, you know? It's kind of prohibits some kind of business going on, you know?
You wanna do that? So that's the seventh one. Notification.
Sign this, or step it in the store.
No, no, all we would do is change the use chart.
Here, and we're talking here, it would be an S, yeah, J.
No, we get all the, oh, yeah, no, I don't think so, it's covered there.
Right.
What do you wanna do with the, so that, sorry, now, we're talking about the J, professional businesses. Rural being an N, changing it to an S, and what about critical rural? Did you wanna leave that?
I would leave that, no.
Okay, so just one S?
I would like to see that S, because it's a fire, it's based on fire acres.
Well, but we have a no for under twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, well, if we look at the, this map right here, the light green is the rural, and the dark green is the critical, you see that it's a large area that you're opening up by putting it in just rural. Opening the whole town up when it's not permitted in any of the town right now would be, I don't know, just, this, this is a reference for that. It's a big area.
Well, we can talk more about it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an easy change, if you guys decide to go, you know.
Yeah, but it's a comprehensive, you do it.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of where a lot of this rural, critical rural, and why the differences that they are is kind of outlined.
Yep. Can we do a quick recap? Newspaper?
Yep.
Gavin's proposed change?
Yep.
Solar?
Yep.
Surety?
Yep.
Page fifty-four, paragraph seven?
Yep.
And then I have land use chart, J, and what was the other one? I knew I missed one or two.
Uh, something on the pits, you know, impact fees, process, yearly licensing. I don't know if we're gonna be.
Yeah, I don't either, I'll, I'll just get some stuff, and if you can, if it can get handled, if it can, if it doesn't, then we'll move it to next year.
And even a bite, you know, even if we can, you know, address one piece of the headache.
Smarter way to do it, too.
A bite at a time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you show too much at once, and you look at the solar, there's a lot to digest.
They're still talking about it.
Well, but they don't come in, that's the thing, remember, they all sat here and said, oh, we'll come in and help here, and just. Yeah, well, we could invite them, and see how they show up.
Yeah.
Probably get, as we got now.
Yeah, we're not ready for that, and I think we need to come up with these few. Was there another one other than the pit things, or was it just kinda?
No, that was it, so I get, I get seven if we do something with the pits.
I'll, we'll work on a bunch of stuff, and we'll have some kind of rough drafts for you guys, so that you have something on paper. We'll try to, at least. And then you guys can work on your stuff. So I'll do, we'll work on the easy changes, at least, and then come up with some verbiage for us to use. If you come up with anything, if, and if you have email, you can just forward something over to us. Or you can stop in.
How do the meetings follow with that February seventeenth? Do we dip over them?
So we have one on the sixteenth? Oh, excuse me, we have one on the second, and then fourteen days, and then seventeenth, right?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth? Was it sixteenth? I was right, I was just.
Two plus four.
Okay, so we do have two meetings in February before we have to finalize that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and, and so I think it's, well, pretty much three weeks from, after that, is when they want it. At least a rough copy.
A draft.
Yeah, and I can't remember when it goes in front of the warrant finance, but I think it was all the way in May, or something like that. Yeah, it was one of those days.
That's always a good time.
I'll, I'll provide copies of those, of the timelines, next, next meeting, so that you guys have it. I just got them, I think the beginning of this week.
Don't you want to use green folders back?
Yes, please. Yeah, I would, we'd like to have the green folders back.
I'm gonna take the minutes to review.
I can look into getting you guys some kind of large folders, legal folders, that you can just put stuff in, but it makes it easier, you can take, take the stuff out of the green folder and keep it, and then we'll get you something at some point, but it's gonna, how we're gonna provide you with new documents every week.
Is this the rest of those attachments?
That's some of them, there was so, I sent, I gave you the hundred-and-ten-page one, there was another hundred-and-ten-page one, but I believe that's the first one, and then I had given you another attachment last time, which was from Tom Tetreo. But that was pretty much, yeah, there was. There's also another, something else in, in there, I don't know if you guys had seen it.
From the city of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, interesting. Did you print up that other email that I read today? I think it got delivered today to my email.
I don't know, I don't think I sent you any emails today.
I didn't get anything new, I included everything that I had from.
Oh, yeah, compare.
Two weeks.
Um, we have.
Conditional use, I think, for hopper, was it hopper?
Oh, yes, we might have, I'm still waiting for all the stuff to come in, somebody, there might be a conditional use for in-home daycare. There were, bit of pebbles. I tried to get North Star here, he already has a commitment. He made sure that he'll be here for the third, for the next one after that. So unfortunately, he's gonna get a memo together for us, though. He's reviewing everything right now, all the new stuff that he had, he wanted to have it to us for this meeting, but he was away on a conference, but he's gonna have one for our next meeting, we'll have a memo, and I'll try to get that, I wanna talk to him, see if I can get it to you guys before the next meeting, so that you guys have something that he can, that's provided by North Star on everything.
And you still haven't got a revised operations manual?
The latest operations manual we got was from, what was it, eleven-twenty-eight? I thought it was from November. Right, they haven't given me any, the applicant hasn't given me any new updates. He's working on it, he said he's gonna get it to me before the twenty-sixth, so it's gonna be one of those situations where I'm gonna either ask you guys to come in and grab it, I'll let everybody know, I'll send out a text message, and, so that you can have time to review it prior to the second, February second meeting. But I told him that I, in the email, I stated I wanted it by the twenty-sixth of January. I think it's on that page right there.
There should be a cover letter in there with bullet points of what I tried to remind him of, that you guys wanted for the next.
Well, I'll combine, make sure I get all those attachments, and if I don't have the attachments, I'm gonna ask you to have that.
I can throw a bunch of stuff on a zip drive for you, too, if you wanna see it. Nope. Come on in, we'll, I don't know what the weather's gonna bring, like tomorrow. We are here Sat, we're here Saturday, too, though, so.
Yeah, I just, I wanna see it all, because I still don't see what was transmitted. I see the change they made, but now I've also seen where, and we shouldn't talk about it, but this.
Right, 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 right. Come in, you're more than welcome to come in, we're, I'll be in the office on Monday, where it's close to the public, but if you wanna do some research, you can.
Okay. Ryan, this is the best part of the night.
John's favorite part of the night.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
All in favor? All opposed? None. You don't want this table?